Good morning and welcome to the Landmark Preservation Commission's public meeting and public hearing of September 9th, 2025. We're going to start by taking attendance and I'm going to ask our legal counsel, Mark Silberman, to take the role.
Vice Chair Master? Mr. Chen?
Yeah.
Mr. Chu?
Here.
Mr. Ginsburg?
Here.
Mr. Goldblum?
Here.
Mr. Ekwembe?
Here.
Mr. Jefferson? Mr. Mahan?
Here.
And Wilder?
This meeting is being held in our hearing room at 253 Broadway on the second floor, and it is also being held via Zoom on our and livestreamed on our YouTube channel for anyone who would like to participate remotely. Before we begin, I wanted to introduce myself. My name is Angie Master and I'm the Vice Chair of the Landmarks Preservation Commission. As many of you are aware, Chair Sarah Carroll has retired and moved to Maine, so I will be stepping in temporarily until a new chair is appointed. We are going to begin with a public hearing agenda for new applications for work on designated properties, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to our Director of Preservation, Corey Harala.
Thank you, Vice Chair Master. Start today's Preservation Department Agenda with Public Hearing Item Number One, LPC 25-11686, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Queens, Block 8017, Lot 38, 355 Knollwood Avenue in the Douglasston Historic District. This is a contemporary freestanding house built in 1955, and the application is to alter the facades, install a balcony and railings, and replace roofing and decking.
Morning, everyone. Mr. B., good morning. Good morning, everyone. My name is Anna. I am here today with the owner, Radek. I will be doing the, I'm helping him do the presentation. So, as you mentioned, the address is 355 Knollwood Avenue. It is in the Douglasston Historic District. It was built around 1955. So as we can note, it is a non-contributing building in the Historic District. As you'll know, the Historic District got landmarked in 1997. So the location is in the northern side, the northern tip of Douglasston, where this little dot is right over here. It is on the corner of Douglas Road and Knollwood Avenue. We have a little historical landmark photo over here, and just, I would just like to read the description of the, of the building from the landmark book. It basically says that the notable features are intersecting gables with asymmetrical slopes overhanging eaves and soffits, and it is a contemporary building. And the other significant note is that it has large expanses of glass. Just on the bottom here is the site map. And as noted, this is a corner property. Here's a quick site plan, a site diagram. This is Douglas Road over here. North is this way, and then Knollwood Avenue. Here are just some photos. This one on the left is the, is the tax photo from the 1980s. And then the current conditions over here on the bottom. This is the eastern side, and then the northern side is also the side that has a lot of glass over here. It's just broken up with a chimney in the middle. And then this is, this one here on top is just basically the sides slash rear. Basically, the lot has two sides, right? Since it's a corner. Okay, again, over here, we have some existing conditions. The other note is that the house is of, made, the main features are brick and board and baton wood facade, which is currently painted. Okay, just to give a little bit of a better view from the street and the surrounding neighborhood, here are some photos, again, of the eastern side. And then, one important thing to note that since this is on the, almost at the, at the tip of Douglasston, it has beautiful, the house has beautiful views of the bay, which you can see right over here, the Little Neck Bay, and also you can see that over here. This is the southern facade. But again, you, you can just see to the right that you still oversee, you still oversee the bay. Here, the, the number three is basically a view in the summer. The area, the, the area and just in general, this particular property has a lot of gla, uh, grass, trees, shrubbery, which we do plan to keep maybe reorganized a little. So to start with, I would say the most important facade and the facade that, I mean, the, the entire outside will be getting renovated. The proposal is to renovate, but this one seems to be the most important. It is the southern, uh, sorry, the east, the east facade, and it is the facade that has the main entry to the building. One important note between the existing and the proposed is that this already has large expanses of glass. We are just trying to kind of clean it up and then do a larger opening and sort of tie it in with what's outside, right? With the nature. Since, as, as we saw earlier, there's, there's a view to the bay and, and, and the property, a lot of grass. There is a railing proposed as well over here, as it is required by code currently. The deck does not have one. And then over here, I don't know if I pointed it out in the pictures earlier, but we'll take a look at another photo. There is a trellis above the entry door, which seems to have been originally designed for a balcony, but it was never made, so it remained as a trellis. But it is important to have something over the roof when you enter the building. So the purpose of this balcony that's being proposed here, yes, it's a balcony, but also to help, you know, when you enter the house, you need something to protect you from the weather, the rain, the, the snow. And then here on the right side, it's just a replacement of the garage door and cleaning up, cleaning up the windows. The other proposal is to replace the roof. We'll get to the material in just a second. It is proposed to be a black clay tile roof. We actually have a sample, but we'll get to it in a second. So this is the other front facade, the south. Again, replacement of the op, the, the glass, not much changes except for these two on the side, which are sort of like double hung windows in a sense, although they're not really double hung, they, they open in, but the proposal is to just replace them with clean glass. The other item that would be replaced is the, the wooden board and baton facade with a cedar siding, like a real cedar wood stained, and then cleaning up the brick also. In, in some areas, replacing with new brick in some areas. It is proposed to do stucco. That's actually, I, I didn't mention it. The proposal to do stucco is right over here around the gar, garage area and to the right, to the other facade. Okay, so this is the west elevation, which is, is not visible from the street. It's towards the side. Again, just some modifications to the openings, cleaning them up, replacing the windows. And again, the, the wood and the brick and stucco here. This is the garage area, the, the back of the garage area. Not much changes here. Again, just replacement of openings, doors. This is the inside of the house. This is the floor plan. It's a, it's a split level home, so basically the first level has a kitchen, a little dining area, and, and the office. This is the main entry here. And then you take a few steps, and there's a very large living room, which is what, uh, which is the area that would have those, those large expanses of glass. And then, once you take a few more steps, you land in the upper or second floor, which has, which has the bedrooms. So this is the start here of the proposed materials. This is the, the black clay tile roof. There are some details here, and as I mentioned, we do have a sample, so we can take a look at it in a little bit. The important thing for us with this roof is that these rooms will have a cathedral ceiling, and this would mitigate the sound rather than just like a simple, maybe, you know, s, s, simple roof, the roofs that are generally used. We did some research, and this would be a good one for, you know, to prevent hearing the rain and other noises from outside. And one thing to also note, although it is a large roof, right? But it is a sloped roof, and it's, it's visible but not heavily visible, because the pitch is not very heavy. We'll get to, we'll get to the proposal in just a second. Here are a couple of other details and proposed materials, the garage door, which would be green. The proposal is green, sort of like a subtle, subtle green shown here and here. And then a composite decking for the, for the deck and the, the balcony. And then similar color to the, the cedar here on this inspiration photo, and also for the, for the soffits outside, for the effaction. Few more photos here, and basically this is, we have some renderings. On the left, you see the existing facade. There's a lot of shrubbery here, so that main entry is a little bit obstructed here, but as we can see, there is that trellis, which we would like to turn into a balcony. And then on the left side is the area that would have the glass and then the railings. And as you can see, this is the, the wooden facade. And then the south, which has the other large expanses of glass all shown over here. This is the proposed on the right-hand side. Just some photos from the surrounding neighborhood. These images on top here basically show other houses within the district that have clay tire, tile roof. Lot of houses have the red, the red type clay tile roof. There's one, or I believe there might even be two, but, you know, we didn't use all the examples. This one has green. There's one towards the Douglasston District that has black. Then on the bottom here, just some other images of protruding items that are in this historical district, meaning balconies, areas that come forward by the main entry of the door. And just, and just the railings that are in the Douglas Manor pier. Sort of similar railings we would like to use for the deck. Few more photos here of houses with natural wood siding. Some of them, as you can see, they're, it's stained. Some of them are just older, so they've, they've faded, or they may be a little deteriorated. This particular house here, 2718 West Drive, it was hard to catch a photo because it had greenery all in the front, but it has a very similar theme to what, what is being proposed at 355 Knollwood. Basically, the upper has wood, and it actually goes around the whole house, and then the lower has brick. This brick is a different color than, than our brick. It's, we're, we're just proposing a, a red, you know, standard, standard brick. This one is more of a beige color. And then some other houses in the area that have larger glazing. These are all front facades. This one's a little bit hard to see because there's a, a deck here, but it did have, maybe, I don't even know if it, these are six, eight feet by seven foot high openings in the front. And then this one also, again, it's a little bit broken up, but it did have larger openings in these two. And one last, one last slide, basically with the house in the winter. Obviously, in the winter, the, the house is more visible due to the trees not having greenery. Just some Google views here with how the, how the house looks in the winter. This is from Douglas Road, looking towards the, the, the house where the garage is. And then this is from the other corner. This is from the corner of Knollwood Avenue and Douglas Road. Again, with the two facades, this, this one that has, that has the garage and the openings, and this one that has the, the chimney and the rest of the glass. And similar view here, again, looking down towards Douglas Road. I think that's basically everything.
Okay, thanks. And I'm just going to give a little bit of background for the commissioners on this one. This is a non-contributing building in the Douglasston Historic District. Almost all of the contributing buildings are 1944 or earlier. There are a handful that are beyond that date. This is not one of them. And so the Douglasston Master Plan, which does provide rules for the staff to use to approve certain work, does provide attention to non-contributing buildings and, and many of the sort of work types that you're seeing here. But this project pushes beyond that a little bit here and there, so I'll just kind of identify those for you, so you can understand what to evaluate here. The balcony and railing up above the doorway, there is no, no mention of that in the Douglasston Master Plan, nor in the regular staff rules, which we would defer to in such a case. So being that there is no staff level avenue for reviewing that, you will be evaluating that. Again, that's the balcony and railing above the entrance. Openings are being modified throughout the house, generally by modest degrees, but the sort of patio doors that access the balcony I just mentioned, as well as the enlargement of windows in the, what's called a pavilion to the left of that, are the, really the only window modifications that you're being asked to review. The decking material, and I believe the railing associated with it, kind of fall under the Significant Landscape Improvements category, which the rules require matching the historic materials that would be found, whether it would be stone for paving, or in this case, wood for decking. The applicant's proposing composite decking, so that's something that you're looking at. And then finally, the materials of the siding replacement and the roofing replacement. The Douglasston Master Plan does allow for non-contributing buildings some flexibility when replacing those materials, but it, it does seek for the materials to be matching or something that would blend with the actual contributing historic buildings in the Historic District. And while there are tile roofs, as was pointed out by the applicant, they're generally always red or greenish in color. What's being proposed is a sort of a deep black glossy finish, so we thought that went a little beyond what staff was comfortable reviewing. And for the siding, while there certainly is wood siding throughout the Douglasston Historic District, the staining of it is something that kind of came in later or is on the, you know, modern buildings that are also non-contributing. Generally, the wood siding in this district was painted wood clavards. There may be a few examples of shingles on Cape Cod Colonial Revivals or houses or arts and crafts buildings, but generally speaking, it's the staining of the wood in this case. So those are the items to look at. The rest of the work would be reviewed and approved at staff level.
Okay, Commissioners, do we have any questions? Commissioner Ginsburg?
So I have a few questions. First of all, I noticed you're using triple pane windows. Are there other energy efficient measures that you're doing as part of this renovation?
Other energy efficient? No, I would, I mean, the, the windows are definitely energy efficient, but as far as other, uh, no.
But thank you. Then, why is the siding in brick being replaced? Is it deteriorated or is there?
Yes, it is deteriorated, and there, there was a little bit of a, there was a little bit of a, a sample or a probe done in one of the areas, and it was just too difficult to point it and clean it up rather than redoing it completely. And, you know, in a lot of, it was like water getting through in a lot of the areas. Yeah, I guess if you, the owner can add it.
I'm sorry, can you come to the podium and introduce yourself?
Hi, and I'm actually the owner of the property. Good morning, happy to be here. Guys, for the most part, the problem with the brick that we have faced is that the shrubbery, literally the previous owner had a lot of shrubbery growing literally around the property, and we have found out with the contractor that a lot of roots of the shrubbery, and I'm not making this up, literally got behind the brick through the, through the, um.
Like the mortar, right?
Right, so exactly. So what would happen is the contractor proposed, we can replace the pointing all the way around the house, but at the same time, he said, basically because of doing this, and, and the look of, at the end of the day, it's not going to be as pleasant, and it's going to be almost as expensive as just replacing with the same type of brick. So the proposal is basically changing the brick to new. If you look at the old one, existing type of brick, lots of edges already cracked, falling off. The brick is over 70 years old.
Sir, just for, just for a moment, if I could, that, as I mentioned, the materials that we're looking at today are really just the wood siding and the roofing. The brick is being reviewed at staff level, and as a non-contributing building, it can be replaced more or less as a brick.
Siding, I just would like to just add on to the presentation that existing siding is also Canadian cedar. It was checked by the, by two architects before we were actually deciding what to do with it, and we're going back to the same problem that it was painted probably two times. Many corners of the building are basically chipped off. Lots of locations, existing siding is basically damaged. And if you end up replacing the exterior brick and bringing the house to, giving the house a new life, the existing wood will not basically work well with the level of renovation that we're planning on doing there.
And I have a final question, which is why the glossy black tile? Why is compared to non-glossy gray, green, et cetera?
Sorry, so. Items, one with what I pointed about the, about the cathedral ceilings inside and the sound mitigation, but.
Just asking about the color.
Yeah, so when it comes to the color, it's, it's basically the part of the design, as you can see, the window frames are matte black. We're not, it's not that we're locked into the shiny gloss. We actually have a sample of the tiles that we brought with us. But when it comes to the black tile, it just works very nicely with the new natural, like a Canadian cedar and the black framed window. It's more of a color scheme that we really like to put it than anything else, guys, to be honest with you.
Commissioners, any other questions? Commissioner Goldblum and then Commissioner Wilder?
On, on the theme of the roof, tell me a little bit about why a clay acoustically benefi-
Sure.
Sorry, why would a clay tile be acoustically beneficial?
According to the research, that either cement or clay tile, they work better when it comes to the rainfall or any type of exterior particles, branches, or whatever you name it, or even wind, affects the actual shell of the building. So, so if, if we do just a regular.
Shingle, yeah, like the regular shingle.
Asphalt shingles?
So, because what happens is that the small, the, the house inside on the second floor is actually very small. Order to increase the feeling that the room is actually bigger than it really is, we've decided to eliminate the ceilings to, just so similar to what we have over here, create a cathedral ceiling. What it is, is that we're going to be losing significant amount of sound material, soundproof material and insulation by doing that. This is why we have to not only insulate it as much as we can on the inside within a short.
Distance.
Distance within, between the rafters, but also we have to put so-called, I call it hard shell on top of the roof.
And have you ever seen, uh, you, the, the style of the, of the buildings that had the clay tile were mostly rather traditional styles, Spanish colonial, federal? Have there been any mid-century modern buildings like this that you've seen with this kind of clay tile?
No.
They were most, mostly either like this one historical or, or of a, I would say a Mediterranean.
Right, okay, thanks.
Got it. Right.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wilder?
A quick question. On the image that you showed, the final rendering with the proposed views, can you, I know you mentioned something about landscaping. Can you give a little more detail about the scope for landscaping? Like for, specifically, on the left, existing elevation, you have shrubs and trees there, but on the right, they're not. And do you plan on putting those back, or what's the plan?
Just, just in the interest of time, if I could interject a more time, the landscaping improvements are all part of the staff level review. We generally don't regulate the sort of what type of plants, whether it's grass or a bush or any of those things to begin with. So it's, they do have a plan for that, that staff is looking at, because it's not changing any of the hardscaping elements, or they otherwise meet the rules, it's, it's just not under review today.
Yeah, I was more so just asking to see what would be visible compared to what was there before.
But if we could go to that last slide that shows the wintertime views, I think that's most illustrative. In terms of the roofing itself, that would still remain the same level of visibility in the winter views. There's no new large trees being put in immediately or anything like that, so it's, it's really what you see now is what you'd see in the roof.
Okay, any other questions, Commissioners? Okay, let's move to public testimony. We don't have anybody signed up. Do we have anybody in the room that would like to speak on this item? Noting that there is not, I will turn it over to Stephen Thompson for remote testimony.
Those joining us via Zoom who wish to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function, after which you will be promoted to panelist. We ask you to unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. All right, I do not see any participants with a raised hand. I'll note for the record that Queens Committee Board 11 recommends approval.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to respond to anything? I, I guess we don't have, really have any comments. Commissioners, do we have any final questions? Okay. Let's close the hearing. Commissioner Mayen, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Commissioner Chen, would you second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed.
Okay. And again, just to briefly, very briefly summarize, Commissioners, what the discussion will focus on today for your review and possible approval. It's the balcony with railing above the doors, the enlargement of particular openings, the patio doors that access that balcony, and then the pavilion to the left. The change in materials, use composite decking in the metal, metal railings at the side deck area, and then the use of specifically stained wood for the siding in lieu of painted wood, and the glossy black ceramic tiles in lieu of a more traditional roofing material.
Commissioner Chu, would you like to start this discussion?
Sure. Can you hear me? Okay. I think for the most part, considering that this house is not a contributing house to, to the district, I find that most of these moves are, are, are pretty modest in terms of the ones that we're specifically looking at. I think the balcony and rail, I'm okay with. The fact that the applicant is proposing quite an open look to it, it doesn't seem like it's obstructing the facade behind at the second floor and the, and the larger window, which has now become sliding pair of doors and glass doors. I, I'm comfortable with that. The composite decking on the small terrace to the side structure, the composite decking I'm okay with, I think that's just something staff should look at in terms of the actual color and make sure the durability- and make sure the durability is there. I find that very minimally, if at all, visible. The two issues that I have slight comments about are, the first is the roof tile, which was discussed previously. I'm okay with the fact that they're using the material. I understand the, the desire to have some more mass up there, and also because it's so minimally visible. I think the coloration is my only real comment. I, I would think the applicant should look at something that was a more of a matte finish. The glossy tile is reminiscent of a style that's not appropriate for this style of house. I think that a, a gray or a matte gray would, would sort of fall into the background in his palette. The other comment I have is about the wood. What I'm missing here, I can accept the fact that they may not want to paint it and still use the cedar, but I do find that the character of this house, if it has any, is really the texture of the, the board and batten. And I'd like to see that applied here. I think the lack of texture combined with the, the contrast or color material differentiation of the existing houses totally lost without that. So yeah, those are two, my two comments. I also would like the applicant to consider using brick on the garage piece, which I'm not quite sure why the stucco was introduced at all. It seems very foreign to me. Those are my three comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
Thanks. I totally agree with Stephen on the brick at the garage. I totally agree with, I, I kind of agree with Stephen on the, on the siding, although I can live with it. I mean, I think that even though the tongue and groove, I'm sorry, the board and batten is, is what's there now, the, the the V groove or whatever the, you know, relatively flush details that they're proposing here is in the style, it's consistent with the mid-century modern style. The, the stained finish is also something that you do see, although personally I'm not a big fan of it. I think that it's, I think that it's, again, within the style of the house. I think that the biggest problem, problem with the roof for me, I mean, apart, I mean, there's two things. First of all, it's gonna be hot as hell with a black roof. But I guess they might, maybe they have enough shade from the trees, but I mean, a black roof is gonna suck heat like nobody's business, but that's, that's their problem, I guess. I think it's the texture. The profile of the traditional clay tile that, that's shown here is very much associated with the Spanish colonial or Spanish revival or traditional south, southwestern architecture. And I think that you can achieve the mass and sound deadening that they're going for with either a flat clay tile, a flat clay shingle, or a slate, or a those are the two, you know, there are concrete, they mentioned concrete, there are concrete versions of, of both of the, you know, both of those. It's that, that, that kind of the cording, that ribbing that, that you see in the rendering that's very, I think, out of character for that style. I think the, I think the balcony is fine. I think the, and the rest of it, I guess, is handled by staff.
Thank you. Commissioner Mayon?
I think the comments from both Commissioner Chu and Commissioner Goldblum were insightful, good comments, lots of food for thought, you know, like, I suppose a bit what we're wrestling here is given that it's a non-contributing you know, building, how you know, strictly you adhere to these sort of stylistic issues. I think for me, I'm okay with the, the wood siding without the addition of the texture. I'm okay with the balconies. I do find the the stucco around the garage to be quite odd without a precedent, you know, within the building itself. The, the roofing, I, I, I agree that it's, it's not consistent with the mid-century modern style, but perhaps if it's a different finish, not so glossy, perhaps a bit grayer, it won't draw as much attention to itself. And that could be acceptable, given that it's a non-contributing building.
Thank you. Commissioner Chen?
I'm in agreement, not to repeat what some of the insightful comments by, by the I think that generally I'm fine with the railing, the balcony and the openings, and I think has been pointed out. They should work with the staff on the coloring as well as whether the stucco should remain on the garage.
Thank you. Commissioner Ginsberg?
So, in general, I agree with my fellow commissioners. First of all, I think this all can be worked out with staff, so you don't have to come back here. And second of all, I just flagged you, although not in our preview, purview, if you're taking off the siding, there are insulation boards you could put under the new siding to make the house much more energy efficient, and while you're doing it, it would be a good thing to look at. I think the loss of the tiles is a problem. I agree with Commissioner Mann that it's probably fine if it's a matte and maybe a dark gray instead of black. I can live with the siding change, although I do think the board and bat might be better. And the stucco on the garage doesn't bother me particularly, but I can go along with the other commissioners who would rather see it as brick.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilder?
Hey, I think I generally agree with most of the things that have been said. I don't love the color of the roofing. I think it, it I think it'll probably detract more from the rest of the building than it does in the photos after it's built. I prefer the brick over the stucco. And I know why I'm okay with the balcony, I know why it's done, it just feels like it kind of takes away from the entrance and the, and the elevation, it looks like it's more room, but in the rendering, it, it feels like it's real, the, the balcony height is really low. I know there was something there before, but that was more open, but here it just feels way too like tight under there. But besides that, I think, I think it's okay. I'm okay with the wood siding as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Ikunbe?
Overall, excuse me, overall, I think the that are proposed, they're, they're overall Overall, I believe that the, the moves that have been proposed are appropriate. Only thing I would point out is I agree with what's been stated already. I would look at a different, I guess, finish and texture for the roof. And then also, also find the, the stucco use to just be
Okay, thank you. I think that we, I think we can make a motion. It looks like we have enough votes for the siding to remain, maybe we can just ask them to work with staff on it. In terms of the roof tile, I think we would want them to explore, you know, a matte or a different color, perhaps gray. And then in terms of the garage and the stucco, Corey has noted that that's a staff level approval.
We, we can similarly ask the applicant to consider using brick at that location instead, but that would fit under the Ducko's and Master Plan guidelines.
Okay.
Okay, would you make the
Sure. Okay, in the case of LPC twenty-five eleven six eight six three fifty-five Noelwood Avenue, Doug- Douglaston Historic District, a contemporary style freestanding house built in nineteen fifty-five. The application is to alter the facades, install a balcony and railings, and replace roofing and decking. I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the building is not one for which the historic district was designated. Then the proposed work will not eliminate any significant architectural features or diminish the special architectural historic character than historic district. That the proposed cedar siding and clay roof tiles be in keeping with the variety of traditional buildings found in the historic district. That the natural stain finish of the cedar siding will harmonize with the color path, the natural materials found in the historic district. That the proposed balcony and replacing the projecting trellis will be well-integrated with the design of the front facade and will maintain a horizontal emphasis over the entry. That the proposed modified opening for the doors at the balcony will be consistent with the scale of the other large openings at the building. That the proposed enlarged opening at the south wing of the building will recall enclosed porch structures commonly found in the historic district. That the proposed black metal windows and doors at the modified openings will match the windows throughout the building in terms of basic configuration, material finish, and details. That the black finished metal railings will be in keeping with the railings found at decks and patios at buildings within the historic district in terms of material and finish. And that the use of gray brown finished composite decking will be imperceptible from public thoroughfares. However, the commission does ask that the applicant revise and work with staff on the black finish of the proposed clay tiles to a more matte gray finish, as well as work with staff on the profile of the clay tiles to look at flat clay tiles as opposed to to arched or traditionally Spanish clay tile profile. Sorry, what was the other thing that we were asking for?
I, I think that covers it.
Oh, yeah.
Require the study of the color and finish, and then explore the profile of the tiles.
That's right. Okay.
Uh, thank you. Commissioner Ikunbe, would you second that?
Second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Vice Chair Master?
Aye.
Mr. Chen?
Aye.
Mr. Chu?
Aye.
Mr. Ginsberg?
Aye.
Mr. Goldblum? Commissioner Ikunbe?
Aye.
Mr. Mann?
Aye.
Mr. Wilder?
Aye.
With eight in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
Great, thanks. That's approved. Let's move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number two. LPC twenty-five dash zero six three zero four, an application for a binding report in the borough of Staten Island, block twenty-eight thirty, lot forty-nine, to Highland Boulevard, the Alice Austin House individual landmark. This is a Gothic Revival style house originally built as a Dutch Colonial style house circa seventeen hundred and enlarged and remodeled in the nineteenth century. The application is to construct an elevated barrier-free access walkway and stairs.
Hello, good morning. My name is Anna Ribero. I work with CTA Architects, we're presenting our proposal to revitalize basically Alice Austin's House surrounding water park. That's the main goal. Currently, so Alice Austin House was is a Gothic Revival, Gothic, Victorian Gothic style house. It was the home of Alice Austin House, one of the first female photographers and LGBTQ plus part of the LGBTQ plus history with her creative group that she nurtured in that house. And also, I believe, and I'm very enthusiastic about it, she also promoted some liberties for women with those groups. So we are not changing anything about the house itself, so this is to make the park and, and access to the park more accessible, which currently it is not by changing, changing some of the materials using the pathways, which are not accessibly friendly mainly for wheelchairs. We're not changing most of the paths, they're not, there's no changes to the paths themselves, except some, as I said, change of materials to provide a better, a better traffic surface. And, and also to provide direct access to the front of the building. Right now, if you're in a wheelchair, you go to a park which is basically gravel stone and have to enter through the back of, to the rear of Alice and Austin House. Let me I was forgetting to, to put this. So Alice Austin faces, it's a, it's, it's a beautiful place. It's facing the New York Narrows. Has a beautiful view to the city, to the Verazano Bridge, very calm, soothing place. I sometimes go there and there's people, families, even if they don't go to the museum themselves, but they're they, they go and, and have some good time and relax. This accessibility project is an effort, it's part of an effort from the Historical House Trust to have a, an homogeneous approach to accessibility throughout all the historical sites. And here we go. So as I said, we don't, this is the existing plan, the part in, in, here in pink is the histori-, is the landmark zone. Part of the parking lot, which is over here is out of it, so this is Highland Boulevard. Here's the river. Here's the, sorry, the, the harbor, the New York Harbor area. This is the house here, and the front entrance is done through the east with, from the street you come here and there's a path to go to the front of the house. So all of these here, the other paths, walk, that, pathways are not going to be changed. So our main focus will be over this area at the parking, and then over the the, the south side, where it's currently a water line, but where we need to make the connection from the parking to the front of the house over here. So the goals, as I said, it installs the boardwork to make it accessible from the parking lot to the front porch, which is the main entrance, and to promote inclusiveness and use of the park by the public. And expand and repave the parking lot, including accessibility for ADA. And also, if I may, reconstruct the, the stairs here at the front loft, the front entrance. Use an aerial view. So the main entrance is done through here from Highland Boulevard, and you can walk along the water edge and go up the stairs and here, but if you have a, you know, accessibility limited mobility, right now, everything is done through the back. And all of these passes, by the way, are now gravel, they were changed by the city after the hurricane. So none of what exists there is part of the, the original pass. The paths themselves also have been changed through the years. Alice Austin left, had unfortunately leave the house due to economic troubles in nineteen forty-five, and since then, until it became protected, these paths are no longer historical, they just have been modified several times. As I said, the last of which was parks and recreation, changing most of them to loose gravel, which it's a concern for wheelchairs and other mobility impairments. So this is the, so this is the northeast view where you enter. As we said, we have not, we're not changing anything about the house or the porch. We are basically just new material, more accessibly friendly material for the traffic surfaces. And also creating that path on the east, on the south side, which is this, where there never was a pass, by the way, to enter the house from the parking lot directly through the front door. So this is the east main entrance, you can see there's a lot of greenery, there's shrubbery here on the south side. Then if we go to the north, Then if we go to the north, this one, the south and the rear, where right now it's the, where you have access from the existing park right now, which we're maintaining the location, as I said, just changing materials. And this is how you enter and you would go through the rear door over here. So in regards to this path, we're proposing something here, which corresponds to the south. This is a view from the parking lot. As you can see, loose gravel, not very accessibility friendly. Oops. Here is the, some of the views of the main, the main elevation that will have the boardwalk for accessibility. Right now, there are already some, a set of stairs here and this is what you see if you have your back against the river. This is side of the house looking at the wood porch that already exists. This is here, the front elevation and how the new boardwalk and stairs will, will, is incorporated. So please remember that this is not going to be as exposed as, as it may seem because we'll show you in a, in a few, there's a lot of shrubbery along that area that screens that view. So we believe it's minimal intrusion into, into taking anything, any attention from the house itself. So here are the types of stairs we're proposing. We're maintaining the same style, wood deck, wood stairs. Here we have the current existing pathways and areas. So this is the house. Over here, you come walking from the Highland Boulevard, go up the stairs, access the house. This exists. There's the parking. There's the, the connection to the street also, and all of these passes continue to exist. If you notice this line here, this is the limit of the historical zone, of the landmark zone. So part of the intervention will be outside of it. Currently, they have something that I think it's quite amazing. I had never heard it before, before working with the museum, which is a queer garden. And this queer garden here is going to be relocated over here. I'll show you in a minute. But a queer garden is basically a garden of plants that don't need the, the usual pollinization to survive. They adapt. So this was an initiative from the museum and we've relocated here. So here is the proposal, what we're proposing. So we're maintaining most of the passes, just the ones that are essential to, essential to the accessibility that we're changing the materials. This is going to be the new parking lot with a designated accessible parking spot so that a person with limited mobility can go along this boardwalk and enter through the main entrance of the museum, the house. We added outside of landmarks, some other passes, just this area here. But as you can see, for the most part, there is no changing in the actual pathways. The materials, as I said, are going to be the same or equivalent aesthetically. So where we have loose gravel by the park area, we're going to have, my sight is failing me. We're going to have some compacted concrete and around it, there's going to be the cobble. I was a bit nervous, so sorry. Cobble markings around like a band marking it, the red brick will be replaced by matching, matching existing also. The boardwalk is also wood, same color matching, all wood, both the railings and the boardwalk. We're going to build, to achieve this, we're building a, oh, sorry. Sorry. So to get to the boardwalk, we're also going to have a, a drywall matching the one existing and these are the, sorry, before and after, existing proposed, existing proposed, where you can see on the south elevation, the boardwalk and the new stairs. The new stairs is, is convenience-wise, so we can have standard moving people just to be able to cut and, and get the access to the house where, while they're enjoying the park. And there's basically no change here, except on the left, on the right side where we have the boardwalk. No change there. This is a rendering, looking from the parking lot to the rear of the house, where you can see the front, the house and the, and the, the water side and the new ramp with the new drywall, dry-laid wall alongside it. Over here is the opposite side. So we're seeing the main entrance. We have the boardwalk with the new stairs, which now, as I said, have to project a little bit forward so we can maintain. Yeah, but it's tucked into the shrubbery. We can see here, this is a detail. You can see we did a zoom on it. So this is mostly covered by shrubbery, this area here. So the impact, aesthetic impact is minimal. This is a unanimous approval by the Staten Island Community Board. And that's, that's basically it.
Commissioners, do we have any questions? No questions? Oh, Commissioner Mann?
Thank you. Could you, on the proposed site plan, indicate for us or describe the pathway, the accessible pathway from the, from the park as well as, from the parking lot as well as from the east side? It looks in the, in the site plan, I'm maybe misunderstanding it, that the connection to this new, new ramp and, and walkway is, is gravel, which you indicated was not accessible. In the proposed, please. There we go.
So the access through, pedestrian access, regular access is through here where the gates of the park are and you come in up the stairs, correct? So for accessibility, you still have to come through the park, the parking lot. But the parking lot will have a different material, a more sturdy material, so wheelchairs, et cetera, do not sink and get stuck on the floor surface. There's a parking spot. So all of these passes here, which this, this part here is the red brick one.
Oh, I see.
And this one here is, it's not a ramp, it's level. It's the, it's the boardwalk, wood boardwalk, and then you are immediately at level with the front porch.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Chu?
I think this is very thorough presentation. The only thing that caught my eye, and I think the rendering answered it, is this orange path on the down page looks like it's calling that as brick, but that is not in fact the proposal.
Uh, no, that's not the brick.
The rendering shows that is more DG.
The, the orangey part is the, the light orange part, so this part here?
The darker orange.
Yeah, I know. This one is the one that it's brick. The other one is, I believe that one is gravel. I cannot see it from here.
Okay. Yeah, I think, yeah, that makes sense.
That we're maintaining, that we're maintaining because we're already providing an accessible route.
Understood. Thank you.
That's basically what they have there right now.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions, commissioners? Okay, let's move to public testimony. Is there anybody in this room who would like to speak on this item? Noting that there is not, let me turn it over to Stephen Thompson.
Those joining us via Zoom who wish to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function. When called upon, you will be promoted to panelist, after which we ask you to unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. The first speaker will be Kaylee Johnson.
Hello, commissioners. My name is Kaylee Johnson, speaking on behalf of the Historic District's Council. HTC welcomes improvements to this site to increase its use and make it more accessible. However, we have some recommendations on how to make the changes, changes blend better with the house and the surrounding landscape. We believe that the interventions might read as stylistically disconnected from the house and could be more picturesque in their design. For example, the walkway could blend more seamlessly into the landscape with a thoughtful material choice that also prioritizes accessibility. The handrail for the ramp could either respond to the Gothic Revival elements on the house or it could be simplified and modernized to be more visually unobtrusive. Additionally, we would have liked to see more historic documentation in the presentation to better understand the original conditions of this house. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Christina Conroy.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. The brief but poetic designation report for the Alice Austin House states, "Situated in beautifully landscaped grounds, this charming house was a showplace on Staten Island in the second half of the 19th century. From Alice Austin's artistic photographic record made during the 1880s and 1890s, we can see the undeniable beauty of this house and its setting, which leaves the viewer a deep appreciation of architectural romanticism, beguiling enchantment, and a nostalgia for the Victorian world," unquote. So how is it possible in an important setting and with the availability of Austin's photographs that not a single historic image is included in this presentation? I mean, how can you, as commissioners, make a valid finding of appropriateness without this information? Well, you can't. What we do know is that this picturesque Gothic Revival house is set in a picturesque rural landscape overlooking the water. We can compare the existing proposed site plans and see that the landscape would become less rural, more formal, and more paved. A great deal of both soft and hard pavement is being added, often in a geometrical anti-picture-esque manner. There are no clear illustrations or examples of what these pavements are or how they will look. Formal plantings are being moved closer to the house. Now, this all seems inappropriate to the picturesque and rural character of the Gothic Revival house and grounds. The new ADA access walk appears to include a stock neo-colonial-style railing of unspecified material. Is it plastic? The railing is a heavy-handed addition stylistically inappropriate to the house. For most of its length, a, the fall protection guard isn't needed. A handrail would be sufficient. Now, if the steps at the end were configured and the grades slightly altered, a handrail alone might suffice for the whole length. The design should reflect the picturesque style of the house and should be painted wood as the commission typically requires at historic houses. A comparison with the approaches being taken at the National Trust's Lindhurst Historic Site and is enlightening. Lindhurst is a similarly picturesque landmark house in a rural landscape setting overlooking the water. Its landscape is being restored based on historic plans, photographs, and even archaeological evidence. Now, necessary new features are designed in comparable styles and materials. This supports and even enhances the house's historic setting, and we should expect no less from the stewards of this city-owned historic house. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Anyone else joining us via Zoom who wishes to speak, please use the raise hand function. All right. Seeing none, I will note for the record that Staten Island Community Board One recommends approval.
Thanks. Would the applicant like to respond to any other comments?
Hi, I'm Dan Allen. I'm a principal at CTA. Good comments, of course, great respect for the Victorian Society. We made every effort to keep this simple as part of the Historic House Trust's effort to democratize the entrance to this building, which we matched the railing in wood, it is painted wood, to existing house. Pathways, there's been some discussion about the pathways. It is a wonderful setting. We are not, can you hear me? It's a wonderful setting. We're making no significant changes to the pathways. It is important to point out, and we've double-checked this with the director of the museum, that the path, the current pathways are in no way historical. Certainly, we are happy to provide historical images. I think we did for the community board. I apologize, that must have slipped out somewhere, but there are good images here. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any final questions? Commissioner Mann?
Could you point out the handrails that you matched that exist?
So are the existing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. If not, let's close the hearing. Commissioner Wilder, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
I'm shaking and close.
Commissioner Ikumbe, would you second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So the hearing is closed. Corey, do you want to summarize?
Sure. And as, as we've seen, this is an application to renovate the access and some of the other landscaping and site conditions throughout the site, largely using and adjusting existing conditions in terms of pathway locations, areas of parking and, and other access areas of that sort. I'm not sure it was clearly noted. I think it was, but I'll, I'll state it again that at the, this is a sort of a designated lot in part. So much of the work at the very back of the site, dealing with the parking and other pathways, is off the landmark site, therefore not under review today. And in general, the rest of the work that deals with pathways and the different access areas at the back of the house is similarly, similarly under staff-level review as adjustments to existing conditions and in general, using like materials or traditional materials. For example, upgrading from loose gravel to compacted crushed stone actually brings it into a more historic condition in certain locations, particularly at the front of the house. So what's primarily under review today is the elevated sort of walkway that stretches from the back of the house and attaches to the corner of the porch, and then that descending set of stairs that then reaches the lower pathway. And as the applicant noted, there are large plantings that are, are to remain in that area that do help to conceal the descending stair. And in general, there are grade changes throughout the site so that when one is kind of to the northeast of this photo anyway, to the upper right of this photo, largely you, you don't see this portion of the site where the boardwalk would be added. So that's what, that's what everyone's looking at today.
Thank you. I think I'm going to take this one, given that I'm the commissioner from Staten Island and we have such few cases on Staten Island. I'm very familiar with the Alice Austin House. I've been there many times. I've been to musical concerts on the front yard and to several social events there. On Staten Island, it's quite a gem. It is set in a very bucolic area. You wouldn't imagine that you're in New York City. There's a vast front lawn, slightly elevated, and you have incredible views of the New York Harbor and the Verrazano Bridge. And as they noted, there is quite a bit of gravel pathway and a gravel parking lot. So it really does give an interesting bucolic feel. I think that, also, as Corey had said, you know, we're really not looking at the pathways and the parking lot here. We're looking at this boardwalk with the railings and the steps that have been recreated. I'm going to note that it is on a secondary facade and it's actually on the side that is away from the public view. The public is really going to be approaching from the Highland Boulevard area, which is the opposite corner. So it really isn't going to be visible except on this one pathway, but not really from the front, especially because of the shrubbery that's in front. Secondly, I think that the material that they've used really blends in well with what is existing. They're using painted wood railings that match, you know, They're using painted wood railings that match, you know, other parts of the house. I think if you were to see it, once it's built, you really wouldn't think that it wasn't part of the original house, and you really can't see anything from the... I don't think it's going to be that visible from the front facade. Also, in general, we at Landmarks are very supportive of accessibility, and we very much want this, as part of the Historic House Trust, to be accessible for people, you know, in wheelchairs. And I think that's it, so I can find this appropriate. Oh, I'm also going to note that Commissioner Goldblum has been recused from this item. And Commissioner Wilder?
Thank you for that insight on the project. I think I agree with most of the points without being there, but I think a lot of the work, as mentioned before, is not located, it's either not visible, or it's not located within this LPC zone that's shown on the drawing. I think a lot of the, at least the orange stuff, it really addresses the accessibility issue and allows people to be able to access the entire site, which wasn't necessarily the case if they did not do that. And so, yeah, I think overall it's appropriate.
Thank you. Commissioner Ikumbe?
I also agree that it's appropriate. I believe what is being proposed is very minimal, and it really doesn't impact...
Thank you. Commissioner Chu?
Yeah, I'm in agreement. I think this is appropriate. It is a straightforward approach to the most accessible way to the front door, and to get you around that site clearly was the challenge to bring you at the main public access on the waterfront. The slope is too great, so, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Mayhew?
I generally agree. The approach is straightforward, it's on a secondary facade. I do find the posts and top detailing of the railing to be a bit heavy-handed, even when compared to the existing conditions. So, staff might work with the applicant to see if those could be thinned up a bit.
Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, it is generally appropriate, and I agree with the Chair's comment and the rest of the Commissioners. Commissioner Mayhew pointed out correctly, what struck me was the handrail detail. I think it's fine to have the detail originally on the side, but once you amplify it, I think hopefully, yeah, you find it an improvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg?
I find this appropriate and would also add in agreeing with the Vice Chair that creating handicapped accessibility for the site and the building is very important, and this is done in a simple and minimal way.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and read this in. In the matter of LPC-25-06304 to Highland Boulevard Alice Austin House, which is an individual landmark, "Application is to construct an elevated barrier-free access walkway and stairs. I issue a positive report, finding that no significant architectural features of the house will be obscured by the construction of the proposed walkway, that when viewed from the front of the house, the walkway and steps will largely be obscured due to the grading of the site and existing plantings, that the proposed wood walkway with painted wood railings will be compatible with the materiality of the existing porch and house, that the walkway will be located along the south facade, a secondary, less developed elevation than the primary facade, and that the proposed work will make the house and site more accessible to all visitors with minimal changes to the house or landscape without detracting from the special architectural and historic character of this house or site. I encourage the applicant to work with staff to review details of the handrails. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you second that?
Second.
Thank you. Mark, will you please call the vote?
Vice Chair Master?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Ikumbe?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Wilder?
Aye.
Seven in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
Great. That's approved. Thank you.
We'll now move to public hearing item number three, LPC-25-11597, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block 2090, lot 40, 212 Adelphi Street in the Fort Greene Historic District. This is an Italianate-style rowhouse designed by Thomas Fagin and built circa 1866, and the application is to modify window openings at the rear facade.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Joe Urso, Preservation Staff. As Corey said, this is a proposal for enlarging window openings and installing a deck at the rear facade of 212 Adelphi Street. 212 is located in the Fort Greene Historic District towards the Willoughby Avenue end of the block. In this slide, you can see the location of the building on the block. Block plan gives a clearer impression of the other decks within the donut, but more importantly, the street wall, which is mostly solid save for a significant gap along the Willoughby Avenue end through which the proposed work will be visible. Here are the existing conditions at the rear facades of 212 and its immediate neighbors, all of which feature LPC-approved accretions ranging from decks, which you can see in the right photo, to occupiable rear extensions with large window assemblies visible in the left photo. Basic plan drawings showing the affected portions of the facade, as well as the projection of the proposed deck. These are existing and proposed elevation drawings featuring the alterations at the parlor floor. These alterations will be using standard materials, mostly metal for the windows and metal and composite for the deck. There will also be stucco patching at the rear facade as needed, which is being reviewed at staff level. Here we have an Axon rendering of the proposed window and door assembly, as well as the deck. And the reason that this is before you today, this is the view through the gap in the street wall from Willoughby Avenue, showing a rendering of the proposed assembly as seen to the right of the large tree within the surrounding context. I will leave it here, and the architect, Julie Tran, is here to address any questions that you may have.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Julie Tran. I'm an architect at P-Trip Projects, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have for the project.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Noting that there isn't, is there anybody in this room that would like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, I'll turn it over to Stephen Thompson.
Those joining us, I assume, who wish to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function. Seeing none, I'll note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board Two recommends approval.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, Commissioners? Okay. Let's close the hearing. Commissioner Goldblum, would you make a motion?
So, moved.
Commissioner Chu, would you second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed.
Just to add just a little bit of context also for your discussion, this is a very typical application for combining window openings for an enlarged opening at the parlor floor, whether at a rear extension or just on the rear facade to access decks and enjoy views of the garden. Staff can review such changes when they're not visible or very minimally visible from a public thoroughfare. This one is more visible than that. But again, as you can see in the foreground, there are three extensions with similar openings. All three of those extensions are either commission-approved or altered, so we have had a hand in the approvals that have been made of this type in this very site.
Thank you. Commissioner Ikumbe, would you like to start this one?
Sure. I guess, as was just stated, this is very straightforward, and I find it acceptable.
Thank you. Commissioner Chu?
Yeah, I think that what we're seeing in the proposal is a condition that has come across, and similar conditions have been approved in the past. I don't see this view having a big effect to what's being proposed at the ground, at the balcony parlor level.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
I agree.
Thank you. Commissioner Mayhew?
I find this appropriate.
Does everyone else agree? Okay, I think we can move on. Commissioner Ikumbe, would you mind reading this motion?
In the matter of LPC-25-11597, 212 Adelphi Street, Fort Greene Historic District, this application is to modify window openings at the rear facade. I note that this building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architecture and historic character of the Fort Greene Historic District. I recommend that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the combined masonry openings will maintain the existing masonry and piers and spandrels between floor levels, that the new opening and infill, visible from an oblique angle in the context of other secondary facades, will be in keeping with large windows and doors assemblies found at neighboring buildings at the parlor floor, that the operable metal-clad doors infill will be simply designed, neutral in finish, and typical in terms of materials and level of articulation. It will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the Fort Greene Historic District.
Thank you. Commissioner Chu, can you second that?
Second.
Thank you. Mark, can you call the vote?
Vice Chair Master?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Ikumbe?
Aye.
Commissioner Mayhew?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilder?
Aye.
Eight in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
Thank you. That's approved. Let's move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number four, LPC-25-12671, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block 1958, lot 45, 426 Claremont Avenue in the Fort Greene Historic District. This is an Italianate-style rowhouse built circa 1860. The application is to construct a rear yard addition, modify an opening, and install HVAC equipment, screening, and railings.
Hi, my name is John Tenith with Timoshang Architects. Thank you for taking a look at our project at 426 Claremont Avenue. Oh, here we are. So, our project is a townhouse at 426 Claremont Avenue with a basement and floors one through three, and the project involves the combination and renovation of the top two floors. And as part of that, we're asking for an extension on the second floor at the rear to match the same footprint of an existing foundation on the first floor. As well, we want to put in an AC unit on the roof, and I'll talk about that in just a moment. We also have the historic photo and the Fort Greene, map of the Fort Greene Historic District. This is a block, photo of the block just showing where our project is located in green and the rear facade, and this shows some of the extensions that have already been, that are the existing extensions that have been put in place on the rear facade. There are two openings where you can see our project from the street. One is along Fulton Street, where you get an oblique or angled view, and then there's another one on Adelphi Street. I also wanted to mention that the one on Adelphi Street, that is, there is a project that has been approved there through landmarks and LPC landmarks and is currently under construction. They're digging the foundations at the moment, so the view from there will not be as big an issue, and I've been told that the HVAC unit that we're planning on tucking onto the back wall of the roof addition will, should be a staff-level overview, and I'm passing along that information. So, here we have a plot plan that shows our project highlighted in red, and as you can see, we've highlighted some of the additions that are in place, that are basement level, first floor, all the way up to some to the right of our building, which are four-story additions, basement to the third floor, that go all the way up to the roof level. These are existing pictures of our project, taken from the backyard, and you can see that we have a basement level and first level extension in brick, and then on the right, we have the neighbors, which has a basement and first level extension and a partial second-floor extension. As a note as well, they are next on the agenda, and they will also be applying for a second-floor addition, so we will be matching in heights and almost the same depths of the... To the left, you see the neighboring buildings, where you can see a basement and first-floor addition immediately to the left, and then a little bit further up the block, those are those taller extensions that are in place, all the way up to the roof level. Here we have a massing model showing the existing conditions with our site in white. You can see those same extensions I was just talking about. As well, a little farther down, there was an apartment building built that goes all the way up, that has multiple stories and extends beyond. Here in moss green, we've shown our proposed extension I think we're asking for, and this would sit on top of the second floor in the same footprint, and we would take our deck level, and we would ask that that be raised up, and an additional deck placed on that, on the extension. At the front of that, we are planning on putting on a 42-inch guardrail. That would be a metal frame with cables for very minimal sightlines, and on the two sides, a slightly higher but the same construction, five foot six, with, again, the metal bars and then just cables at four-inch increments per se, also to provide some screening. On the roof, that's the AC unit that's shown there, that would be tucked up against the back wall of the existing roof addition. In access to the deck, we do have, there are three existing windows there, and we would ask to enlarge that opening, and to get the minimum six foot eight that we need for a door, we would need to raise that slightly. This is the, one of the two views where you can see our building and our addition. This is from Fulton Street, and you can see on the left, the existing extension, and then the existing upper stories. And then on the right, we placed in the, a rendering of what that would look like with our addition, with the windows, the deck on top, and then the small, the large door opening as well. This is, for completeness, we're showing the view from Adelphi Street, and you can see, you do see the rear facade in those three windows, and you see a little bit of the roof addition, but this will be hidden once the building is completed. And in the upper left, you can see the construction fence there, and they've started construction. And we have plans showing on the second and third floors where we're doing our renovation. The second floor, the existing, has a terrace, and we would match that footprint to create an enlarged room in the back with our three windows. For those, well, I'll talk about those windows in a moment, but we would be creating a room back here that's an enlarged kitchen and dining room. Then on the third floor, the upper floor, there we would be asking for a terrace and a window, or using a door, window opening to be enlarged to allow a door out to the terrace. And finally, the roof, this shows the planned room plan. This is the existing section, and we can see that from both sides of Claremont Avenue, you can't see the roof addition, it's below your line of sight, and then when you add the extensions and the HVAC, of course, those continue to be hidden. This is the existing foundation, the existing rear elevation, showing the three windows that would be removed, or the two windows and the door that would be removed, and that is constructed of brick, and this is our proposed elevation, where we'd bring it forward. It would also be brick to match the existing brick down below, and then you can see the railing on top for the deck. Here, we are asking for the windows to be enlarged from what was there before at the setback facade, and here we feel like this would just bring more air and light into the project. It is a public room of a kitchen/dining room, and it would make... It is a public room of a kitchen, dining room, and, and it would make, greatly improve the, the project. Um, and this is, also has a lot of precedent within the buildings, sorry, within the block, including the neighbors next door. You can see some of them, and I'll point out some examples in a moment as well. And then, um, this is the final rendered image we have, which shows on the left, the existing rear facade again, taken from the backyard, and on the right, what that would look like in, uh, with the addition on top of it and the railing. And you can see that the rooftop addition, even from the backyard, is not visible. And here on those windows, we wanted to bring in as much light as possible, but we, uh, we wanted to continue to replicate that three-window pattern that you see up and down the block. We felt that would keep it in, uh, it, fit in with the style and the existing conditions of the neighborhood. We continue with a bronze, um, exterior, uh, material for the windows to match everything else on the building. Um, then, uh, again, we've talked about the cable railing above. And then just for completeness, again, this would not be visible, but this would be the rooftop addition that's existing, where we were to add the AC unit on top. And then the final image on the left just shows if you stand as far back as you can in the backyard, you can only just barely see the top of this rooftop addition, and you can't see the AC at all. And these are some examples of the larger windows. You can see, be seen on the block. Um, you can see, running on the right, this is over on Green Street. There's some windows that look to be over nine feet high, um, across the street on Adelphi Street. Sorry, a, a little bit up the block, there's some windows that are, uh, between seven and eight feet. Um, the apartment building also has building, windows are about seven feet. The next-door neighbor, 428, has windows that are, uh, I believe about seven feet. And then you can see, um, visible from Fulton Street, there's a, another townhouse of the same row that has windows, um, quite large on the first and second floor. And finally, I just wanted to include a rendering that showed you what both our project, the building in the white, and our neighbors would look like if both of those massings are approved and installed. And they would, um, uh, come up to the same height, come, basically come up to the same depth, and sort of fit in with the, uh... Also worth mentioning that all of this is within the zoning envelope. We are both set back, um, a few, I think, five or six feet from the rear yard setback, even farther. So there's a little bit more space there, all out of, as of right.
Thank you. Commissioners, uh, do we have any questions? Commissioner Chu?
The only question I have is, the top floor that's existing, and you revise the window to a door, you push the door?
Yes.
Vertically. It didn't even, it didn't look like on the photo there was that much brick above the window. And I look at your neighbor's proposal, and I wonder why you could do that, too?
So I'm, this might be just my lack of, uh, I don't have all of the details on the neighbor's, um, plan, so I'm not sure where exactly his floor level is. I assume it's the same.
Yeah.
He may have to raise it the same amount.
Why could you not do what he's doing?
Which is to keep the, the...
The head of the door.
Well, by code, a door needs to be six foot eights.
Understood. Why?
We are right at the floor level of, of the top floor. There's not a step up. And then we step down onto the deck a little bit. So there, if we start at that, that floor level and go up six foot eight, this is the minimum height that we can have.
Do you have a section you can show?
So I'm afraid I don't have the door section shown, but...
Oh, so you are, you are at the floor level of the sec, of the third floor. You're not stepping up to get to the terrace?
Right.
Okay.
Did try to minimize that height as much as possible.
Okay. I thought you were, you were, um, you were stepping up inside and then coming out to a higher elevation.
No, no.
No, okay. Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, maybe it's the massing is better. But there are other facades along the street where that also happens, where the, the door has to come up slightly. It does have a necessity if we want it to be able to...
Got it. Okay. I understand.
Thank you. Any other questions, commissioners? Okay. Um, do we have anybody in this room who would like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, I'll turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote testimony.
Those joining us via Zoom who wish to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function. After which you'll be promoted to panelist. We ask you to unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. The first speaker will be Kaylee Johnson.
Hello, commissioners. My name is Kaylee Johnson, speaking on behalf of the Historic District's Council. HGC finds this proposed third-floor extension to be inappropriate. This row of four houses from 424 Claremont Avenue to 430 Claremont Avenue is largely intact and should not be altered. The maximum height of, of an addition here should not exceed two stories. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Christina Conroy.
Hey, can you see me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Uh, so good morning again, commissioners. I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Now, the Victorian Society has no objections to this proposal to install HVAC equipment, screening, and railings at 426 Claremont Avenue. However, we believe that there is a basic flaw in the facade design of the visible rear yard addition, which must be addressed. The rear facades of 19th-century rowhouses normally have a unified pattern of double-hung windows of a similar width on each floor. They align vertically. If the original architect chose to use one-over-one windows, they were all one-over-one. Typically, only the height varied with taller windows on the parlor floor and shorter windows on the top floor. The windows on the primary facade of 426 Claremont follow this pattern of varying heights. The visible top two floors of the rear of 426 Claremont retain their historic window openings with three one-over-one windows, which align on each floor. The proposed design would break the pattern, introducing wider multi-light casements with hopper windows at the second floor. The result, which will be seen from Adelphi Street, will be a rear facade of hodgepodge of windows. The proposal will seriously diminish the unity of the rear donut and should not be allowed. We urge denial of this portion of the application. Thank you, commissioners.
Anyone else joining us via Zoom who wishes to speak, please use the raise hand function. Seeing now, I'll note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board Two recommends approval.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to respond to the comments?
We, um, the, um, I suppose for the first comment, this is, uh, actually the second floor, not the third floor extension, so it's not going all the way up to the roof. On the windows, I feel like there's already the precedent, already a precedent of people enlarging the openings throughout. Um, just a small correction, it's not here nor there, it's, uh, it's, there are, um, casement windows rather than hopper windows that are proposed, operable portion. But I feel like this, the windows are in keeping with the sizes that have been, um, installed over the years at the rear. Well, since the Adelphi opening is being closed, this will only be visible on a very oblique angle and really won't be very noticeable.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions? Okay, um, let's, uh, close the hearing. Um, Commissioner Ginsburg, uh, would you make a motion?
Still moved.
Uh, Commissioner Chen, would you second?
Okay.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed. Commissioner Goldblum, would you like to start this one?
Sure. I think this is, uh, uh, appropriate. Uh, the, uh, only concern that I really have is, um, I mean, it's well within the, the norms of what we, we do. Um, I really don't see it as a, a particular concern. Um, it does raise, raise the level by a floor on, on a block that doesn't have a lot of that, but, um, there is enough of it, and I think it's, I wouldn't consider it a pristine block. So I think it is okay. Um, the rooftop addition is also quite modest. I, I do think that the one comment that I would ask them to work with staff on is the, the, the setback of the deck from the edge of the roof, make, that the staff should just make sure that it's, uh, setback the normal amount that we, we ask for rooftop additions and railings and stuff to be set back. I think it's three, three feet, is that it?
It, that, that is correct. Uh, I'll, I'll point out that, that those are existing conditions.
Oh, that, that, that's actually existing?
Yeah. Uh, the air conditioner unit as well, uh, we calendered that, but because we determined that the open lot on the other side of the block was under construction, that no longer counts for our purposes as being visible. So the AC unit is being reviewed at staff level, so it's the, uh, rear addition on top of the existing rear addition that...
Then never mind, and it's fine.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Mann?
I concur with, uh, Commissioner Goldblum. I think this is, uh, in keeping with what is often approved, in keeping with the, um, conditions of the block. Um, and by the way, I love the, uh, this aerial white card view of the entire block. It makes the, um, proposal very easily legible and digestible. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Chen?
I'm, uh, in agreement with the comments. I think this rendering really does, uh, speaks, um, illustrate well what, what the proposal is about, and I can agree with the rest of the commissioners' comments.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Agreed, appropriate.
Commissioner Wild?
I agree it's appropriate.
Commissioner Ikumbe?
Found it appropriate as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Chu?
Um, I'm just gonna make one comment. Um, I think it's appropriate. We have approved similar, um, applications. I do think there, there is validity to, to testimony about, um, some consistency vertically at the, the floor above and below. I like this diagram, but it indicates the addition as being a very separate element, and ultimately you want some continuity between what you're adding on top of. I do think it's okay, only because I see that the windows seem to be somewhat centered above and below, so they're not completely awry. Um, but I do, I would like staff to work with the applicant, seeing if there is a little more consistency in the vertical alignment here, or at least some center line or side adjacency.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Goldblum, would you read this in?
Sure. Regarding LPC 25-12671, 426 Claremont Avenue in the Fort Greene Historic District, the application is to construct rear yard addition, modify an opening, install HVAC equipment, screening, and railings. Um, I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Fort Greene Historic District, and I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the proposed work will not be minimally visible from public thoroughfares at an oblique angle through a gap in the street wall to the south, and seen in the context of other rear additions, that the proposed addition on top of the existing two-story rear extension will not rise to the full height of the building or project deeper than existing, the existing extension. And therefore, will maintain a sense of the building's original massing, that the proposed rear addition in combination with the existing rear extension rooftop addition will not overwhelm the building or diminish the central green space, that the simple design, materiality, and finishes of the addition featuring red brick cladding and punched openings with dark brown finished window assemblies, black finished metal railings, and an open screening, and dark brown finished metal gutters and leaders will be in keeping with the residential scale and character of other buildings in the block, that only one masonry opening will be enlarged at the top floor by lowering the sill and raising the lintel, and otherwise retaining the historic width and placement thereby maintaining the unity of the row, and that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the streetscape or the Fort Greene Historic District, and the applicant work with staff to ensure a harmonious relationship between the proposed windows and the existing ones.
Thank you. Commissioner Chu, would you second that?
Second.
Thank you. Mark, will you call the vote? Oh, John, will you call the vote?
Vice Chair Master?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Ikumbe?
Aye.
Commissioner Mann?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilder?
Aye.
Eight in favor, none opposed. The motion passes.
Thank you. That's approved. Um, let's move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number five, LPC 25-11387, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block 1958, lot 46, 428 Claremont Avenue in the Fort Greene Historic District. This is an Italianate-style rowhouse designed by John Dougherty, built circa 1860. The application is to enlarge and modify an existing rear yard addition.
Good morning. I'm James Baer, James H. Baer, architect. I'm the applicant for 428 Claremont Avenue. I'm gonna thank John for, um, covering a lot of the background information already. This is the existing front facade. This indicates its location within the, um, southwest corner of the Fort Greene Historic District. Um, you can see that the Historic District splits the, um, the block between Claremont and Adelphi in half. We are on the landmark section of it. Um, the right image is the 1940s photograph. The left image is all seven of the houses in a row. I include it because I wanted to point out that, um, all of the houses on the front facade were originally built identically. Get to the back, we'll see some other things. Um, these are, um, the, the block, the block plans. Um, as you can see, oh, I get to use my little thingy here. Up here, onto an existing three-story, full-width rear yard addition there. Block on Adelphi, which is that vacant block, which is under construction on the site a couple of weeks ago. And they have a construction fence, and there was a, um, excavator on site, and the foundation excavation has started. This is a, a three-dimensional, showing the same thing. The, um, the bottom plan, bless you, shows the existing. And then the upper plan, that is the three-story that's already visible from Adelphi Street. And this is, um, my proposed, uh, second-floor extension of the existing extension. This is the existing, or the proposed, um, first-floor addition, excuse me, basement addition. And then this indicates that there is an addition at 424 that, um, sticks out a little bit further than, than what I am proposing. A narrow view indicates that, um, this is, this is quite difficult. Um, that is the Adelphi Street opening that is in the process of being closed. Um, and this is what can be seen from Fulton Street. Existing conditions at the rear, um, showing the existing wooden deck, sorry, sorry, uh, the existing wooden deck at the, uh, first-floor level, the existing extension at the basement and first-floor levels, and the existing partial addition at the second-floor level. I should note that the, um, existing rear facade has a, um, very well bonded cement, painted cement stucco finish on it. And our intention is to very carefully chip off the initial surface of the stucco so we can get down past the paint. We can smooth it a little bit because it's been done quite roughly, and then, and apply a, um, integrally coated, or integrally tinted, um, cement stucco with a much smoother finish, um, on the existing brick facades to remain. This is what can be seen from Fulton Street. Um, the one on the left was taken in, um, the early part of the year during the winter. I was actually standing on the fence around the, um, around the tree pit. Um, I thought it was appropriate to show you exactly what it was that could be seen from almost anywhere. I've been told since then that I really should have just done it from the sidewalk. So, um, the image on the right is from the sidewalk taken in the spring, and... And there is actually a mock-up in place in that image. And that's the mock-up that was in place on both the first-floor level and the second-floor level. This is an indication of where we are and where we're going to indicate that there is an eight-foot extension at the basement level with a new deck on top of it. The wood deck has come off. And then the the extension of the second floor, a level with a excuse me, a deck on top of that with a four-foot thirty, forty-two inch high painted steel railing around it. The commissioner has asked about the ceiling or about the the head heights, and that issue was raised. And I went back and I looked at my my field notes. I'm planning on using a very, very small roof construction, even if I have to double up the joists and the smaller joists to do that. And based on my field notes, I can get a legal door within the existing masonry opening. So at the moment, that's my plan. What else do we have here? This then is a larger-scale rendering and a the notes on the right-hand side. The intention then is that the entire back facade has the same integrally tinted cement stucco finish. Staff has given me, raised a lot of questions about the color. And we spoke with the owners that this was something that will come up during the hearings, and they said, well, let's go ahead and ask for what we want and see what the reaction is, and we are willing to discuss it if that's what everybody wants to say. I also wanted to point out that these are the first four of the seven houses that were built in a row. And you can see that there's a difference between the the additions on the first, the basement and first floor of the first two houses and the second two houses. There's about a two-foot difference between the extensions on the first two and the second two. And then buildings, the last three buildings are completely different. So even though the fronts are all the same, the backs have always been different. There's also onsite information that shows up in the appendix that suggests to me that the parlor floor was changed, maybe even during construction. There's a very weird way in which the the cornice in the back parlor sort of jigs and jogs in an unusual way. We can look at that if in the appendix if anybody's interested. These are the plans, just indicating the befores and afters on each of the floors. Top floor. The section. The the last rendering. This was supposed to be my landing page, but the previous architect was nice enough to give me this image to show the two of them in tandem. That's it.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Okay, no questions. Is there anybody in this room who would like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, I'll turn it over to Stephen Thompson.
Anyone joining us via Zoom who wishes to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function. Our first speaker will be Kaylee Johnson.
Hello, Commissioners, this is Kaylee Johnson, speaking on behalf of the Historic District Council. HTC finds the proposed third-floor extension enlargement to be inappropriate. We find the existing extension to be appropriate, but find the proposed enlargement of it to be too disruptive to the donut. Thank you.
If anyone else joining us via Zoom wishes to speak, please use the raise hand function. All right, seeing none, I will note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board Two recommends approval on the condition that the ground-floor extension not be enclosed.
Thank you, would the applicant like to respond to the comments? Okay. Great, thank you. So let's move to close the hearing. Commissioner Goldblum, would you make a motion to close this hearing?
Oh, moved.
Commissioner Chu, would you second? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? So the hearing is closed. Corey, do you want to say a couple of words?
Sure, so I think this is a, you know, a very similar application to what you obviously just saw and approved next door at 426. Applicants proposing a third-story addition on top of the footprint of their existing extension, and in this case, to the side of a partial third floor that already exists. So this is more filling in the remainder of the third floor in this case. But the result would be, you know, a three-story addition is essentially of what was just approved. In addition, this applicant proposes the basement-level extension several feet beyond that, but they've noted and presented in their materials that the neighborhood 424 already has such an extension, I think that maybe is at a slightly deeper depth and also further into the donut. You can see there are larger protrusions into the green space. So this wouldn't be deeper than anything else in the block. I think this applicant has stated that they can fit the door into the top-floor opening without modification, whereas the next-door building did ask to raise it if necessary. And I think in either case, we would work with these applicants to make that as minimal as possible, if it's needed.
Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you like to start this one?
With pleasure. So in general, it's very similar to what we looked at last time, her last application. And I think that that, so the differences is the ground-floor addition seems appropriate. It's basically filling in where a deck was already. And so I think that's fun. And my one comment is I think the bright white is a little too bright not in keeping, so that working with staff, picking a color, a light gray or a red that fits more into the rest of the donut would be good. But besides that, I find this appropriate.
Thank you, Commissioner Chen.
Likewise, yeah, I think the the only thing that I will ask the applicant to work with is obviously the the bright white finish with the staff, the brightness.
Thank you, Commissioner Mayon.
I agree, on all counts.
Okay, Commissioner Goldblum.
Agreed.
Chu.
Agreed.
Commissioner Kumbe.
Following suit.
And Commissioner Wilder.
Agreed.
Thank you, would you read that in?
Of course.
Just remembering to turn on my mic. With regards to LPC 25-11387, 428 Claremont Avenue, Fort Greene Historic District, an Italianate-style rowhouse designed by John Dougherty and built circa 1860, application is to enlarge and modify an existing rear yard addition. I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Fort Greene Historic District. I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the basement-level addition will not be visible from a public thoroughfare, and the third-floor addition will only be seen through a gap in the street wall within the context of other rear yard additions and tolerant neighboring rear yard facades, that the proposed basement-level addition will be similar in height and depth to another addition within the row, therefore the work will not diminish the central green space, that the third-floor addition will enlarge the existing addition to be full width and will not rise to the full height of the building, thereby maintaining a sense of the building's original massing, that the addition will be simply designed and feature punched openings and wide-end piers and will maintain the residential scale and character of the building, that the proposed stucco cladding will match the existing cladding at the rear facade and at portions of the existing addition to remain, and the cumulative effect of the existing proposed addition will be modest increase which will not overwhelm the neighboring properties. However, I note I find that the proposed bright white finish will not be in keeping with the range of finishes of the surrounding rear facades and additions and will call undue attention to itself. Therefore, I recommend that the color of the stucco be revised to blend with the range of finishes at the surrounding properties in consultation with staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Chen, can you second that?
Second.
Thank you, John, will you call the vote?
Vice Chair Master.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Chu.
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Aye.
Commissioner Kumbe.
Aye.
Commissioner Man.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilder.
Aye.
Eight in favor and opposed, the motion passes.
Thank you, that's approved. Let's move to the next item.
All right, next item is public hearing item number six, LPC 26-01274, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block 1964, lot 37, 198 Green Avenue in the Clinton Hill Historic District. This is an Italianate-style rowhouse built circa 1870. The application is to create a new window opening.
Hi, my name is Fred Tang. I'm representing the owners at 198 Green Avenue. Proposal is to create a new opening on the rear facade. This is the landmarks, the historic district map. You can see the location of 198 Green in the Clinton Hill Historic District. There you can see the building on Green Avenue, and a little portion of the back is visible from an opening on Cambridge Place. 1940s historic tax photo. There is a view from Cambridge Place looking at our building, which is one building in from the corner. The existing condition has two openings, a window and a replacement of those were approved. We are now proposing other opening in the center. Showing our building 198 and and also 196, which is visible here. 196 also has that center opening. Another view of 196's opening and our our building here with the red dotted line showing the center opening. Here's a view from the rear. We're proposing a four-foot opening, even though the other two openings are three feet in width. That's similar to what 196 Green has. And it's because there's an existing alcove on the interior that's four feet wide, so we're proposing to use that width. There are exterior elevations showing on the left side the elevation approved at staff level, and on the right side, the opening in between the two. There's a axonometric showing. The Molyian pattern is meant to mimic the two-over-two windows of the building on the corner. There are door and window details.
Thank you, Commissioners, do we have any questions? Okay. Let's move to public testimony. Is there anybody here who would like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, I'll turn it over to Stephen Thompson for remote testimony.
Those joining us via Zoom who wish to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function. Seeing none, I will note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board Two recommends approval.
Okay. Commissioners, any final questions? Okay, let's close the hearing. Commissioner Kumbe, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Oh, moved.
Commissioner Wilder, would you second that?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The hearing is closed. Corey, did you want to say anything about this item?
Sure. Yeah, this this is an application to create a new window opening, as you can see at the parlor floor accessing the existing balcony. It is slightly more than minimally visible from a public thoroughfare. The house next door that was noted that already did a similar alteration, I think was right on the border and slipped in as being minimally visible enough. So this one is a little more than that. The staff rules do allow for new window openings even on visible facades as sort of a second piece of information. However, they need to be of the same general shape and size as the other building, other windows on the same facade. And this one is close, but again, I think as the applicant noted, it is a foot wider, and it starts to reduce the amount of masonry between each of the openings. So one other thing I'll note is that the commission has reviewed and approved a similar application before that coincidentally did also have that interior alcove with the round top. And in that case, the applicant wanted to recreate the round top arch on the exterior side, and that was what was approved. In this case, this applicant wants to match the segmental arch, so it's the same as the the windows to either side. But but otherwise, very similar applications. That application was actually more visible than than the window opening is here.
Thank you. Commissioner Chen, would you like to start this one?
Sure, I mean, I think Corey said it all. I'm even wondering why is it coming before the commission here? Why is it not a staff-level approval? So no, I can't find it appropriate.
Thank you, Commissioner Mayon.
I can also find this appropriate.
Thank you, Commissioner Goldblum. Commissioner Chu.
Yeah, and the only comment I made, which I'm sure the applicant is aware of, but that the final dimension of the opening should be coordinated with the actual brick layout, and no cutting of bricks that should be full or half-brick turns, returns, that's all.
Okay, Commissioner Kumbe.
Appropriate.
Commissioner Wilder.
Unappropriate.
And Commissioner Ginsburg.
Appropriate.
Okay, Commissioner Chen, would you read that in?
Keen observation, Stephen. In the matter of LPC 26-01274, 198 Green Street, Clinton Hill Historic District, the application is to create a new window opening, noting the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Clinton Hill Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not eliminate or damage any significant architectural features, that the work will only be visible obliquely through a gap in the street wall on Cambridge Place, that the removal of a limited amount of plain brickwork at the rear facade will not significantly reduce the solid-to-void ratio or detract from the historic character of the simply-designed rear facade or facades of adjoining buildings, that the configuration, operation, finish and details of the new window will be harmonious with the fenestration pattern at the house and the row, and that the work will not detract from the special architectural historic character of the Clinton Hill Historic District. A break at the corner.
Thank you, Commissioner Ginsburg, would you second that?
Second.
Thanks. John, will you call the vote?
Vice Chair Master.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Chu.
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum. Commissioner Kumbe.
Aye.
Commissioner Mahan.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilder.
Aye.
Eight in favor and opposed, the motion passes.
Thank you, that's approved. Let's move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number seven, LPC 26-01004. This is an application for an amendment in the borough of Brooklyn, block 252, lot 59, 33 Giralliman Street in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. This is a new building under construction. The application is to amend certificate of appropriateness 24-00936 to modify the plane of the rear facade. And it's calendared as to excavate the rear yard. However, I will note that that is not part of the current proposal, so we're just looking at the change in plane to the rear facade today.
Good morning, Commissioners. Nell Gunther Preservation Staff. The item before you is for 33 Giralliman Street in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. The subject property is located mid-block on the north side of Giralliman Street between Hicks Street and the Brooklyn Queens Expressway. I'll walk you through the details of the proposal, which is to amend certificate of appropriateness 24-00936 to modify the plane of the rear facade of a new building approved under that permit. The new building is shown in the right-hand image on the screen, and as Corey mentioned, that the advertised excavation is not being presented today. Here's an aerial view of the subject property and renderings of the new building as it was approved. This is a block plan showing the building depths at this block, indicating the proposal to shift the plane of the rear facade to align with that of the building to the east at 35 Giralliman Street, as approved by. at 35 Giralliman Street as approved by certificate of appropriateness 26-00286 instead of the buildings to the west. These extonometric diagrams show the relationships of these rear facades, on the left at the time of the previous approval and on the right as proposed today. And here are building sections, rear elevations, and floor plans showing the proposed change in plane. The applicant is present to discuss the appropriateness of the proposal and to answer any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Oh, Commissioner Chu?
Yeah, I guess just the reason for the change.
Good morning. Steven Sorak of the Design Build Firm, and representing the owner. The reason for the change is originally the application was respecting the modesty of the row of houses and the massing, and the goal and aim was to align our rear facade with the two adjacent properties to east and the west. Now that 35 Giralliman was approved to extend their rear facade plane two feet, our owner would prefer to align now to the house, to the east.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Let's move to public testimony. I note that there's, is there anybody in this room who would like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, let me turn it over to Stephen Thompson.
Anyone joining us via Zoom who wishes to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function. Our first speaker will be Judy Stanton. I'll be promoting you to panelists, after which we ask you to unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Judy Stanton, speaking for the Brooklyn Heights Association. We do not support this application. This proposal feels like a backyard arms race where each neighbor tries to maximize the depth of their building's proposed extension based on the most recent outcome of commission deliberations next door. We don't agree at all with this premise. Approvals at adjacent properties often have their own idiosyncratic logic internal to the particular property. An approved building depth at one property, speaking of 35 Giralliman Street, should not automatically apply to neighboring properties, that's 35 Giralliman Street, sorry, and certainly not retroactively to the project that was so recently refued by the commission. The owner should stick with what was already approved in 2023. We note that even if this project was reviewed on its own merits and not for the stated rationale of matching the depth of the adjacent building, we would still find it lacking. Extending the plane of the penthouse from what was already approved introduces a new iron railing across the full width of the building instead of just in front of the window doors. It sits in front of a new awkward ledge that is neither a Juliet balcony nor a regular terrace. The new railing and ledge are not appropriate. Thank you.
Anyone else joining us via Zoom who wishes to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function. Seeing none, I will note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board Two recommends denial.
Thank you. Would you like to make a comment, address the comments?
Sure. In regards to the, the alignment to 35, we find it appropriate because the two projects to the west of 29 and 31 are matching in, in a pair, and we would become a pair with our neighbor to the east of 35. And then from 37 onward, they all step out and match. So there's a rhythm in sets of twos, and then all the way up the block, then they align.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any final questions? Okay, let's move to close the hearing. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Commissioner Chen, would you second that?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed. Corey, do you want to say something?
I think the applicant did a good job and staff explaining the changes here. You know, simply put, the existing approved new building design in terms of the actual aesthetics, but also as well as the other aspects of the additions in the back. So the rear extension is unchanged, the rooftop addition location is unchanged. As was noted, it's just the plane of the rear facade moving out to meet the neighbor next door, which never aligned with the, the rest of this group of four. And I'll also note that I believe part of the original proposal discussion did sort of touch on how close the penthouse level was to the rear facade and that being somewhat atypical. So noting that the further extension of the rear facade below would create a little bit more breathing room as is more common for rooftop additions on rowhouses that are seen here.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilder, would you like to start this discussion?
Sure. Thank you. I think Commissioner Chu kind of asked the best question. What was the, what was the reason? Interesting answer, but I, I guess I can't be mad at it. I don't feel it really impacts what was, what was approved before. So for those purposes, I, I think it is appropriate. And I think being able to activate that penthouse, as Corey mentioned, I think it enhances it better than what it had before. So yeah, I think it's appropriate.
Thank you. Commissioner Ikumbey?
It's the positive thing I can see about the, the new. It's, it's a, I guess, but with that, I do ask why the railing is even required at that level or so, if there should be some other type of termination? Because I don't even know, it's a window. It's like it's just going out onto a balcony that's not accessible. I would wonder.
I, I think the intent is to make that an accessible terrace. So those are sort of patio-type doors that would access that full width now because they have enough room. Whereas before, it was more of a Juliet style just in front of the, the infill itself.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chu?
I'm okay with this proposal.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum? Thank you. Commissioner Mayon?
Given the alignment with the neighbor in the future, I can find this appropriate.
Thank you. Commissioner Chen?
Same here.
Ginsburg?
Agreed, appropriate.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Wilder, would you like to make the motion? Do you read this in?
Sure. In the matter of LPC 2-26-01004, 33 Giralliman Street, Brooklyn Heights Historic District, I note that the new building, as approved by the commission on October 24th, 2023, is under construction on a lot that was vacant at the time of the designation of the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. I further note that the rear yard excavation portion of this project is no longer part of this application. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work at the rear of the new facade will not be visible from a public thoroughfare, that a proposed change in plane at the rear facade will be limited to the upper floors of the main portion of the building and therefore will not diminish the central green space, that the proposed plan on the upper floors of the rear facade will align with the commission-approved rear facade of the adjacent building to the east will not disrupt an existing unified row and will be harmonious with the range of depths of buildings on this block, and that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the Brooklyn Heights Historic District.
Thank you. Commissioner Ikumbey, would you second that motion?
Second.
Thanks. Mark, will you call the vote?
Vice Chair Master?
Aye.
Mr. Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu? Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum? Commissioner Ikumbey?
Aye.
Commissioner Mann?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilder? Eight in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
Great. That's approved. Let's move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number eight, LPC 21-10447, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block 321, lot 40, 132 Kane Street in the Cobble Hill Historic District. This is a rowhouse built circa 1850, and the application is to construct an areaway and install curbing and ironwork.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brendan Coburn for this project. This is, we were, this is us coming back to, to request a certificate of appropriateness for the creation of a front yard and side yard areaway, which we showed to the commission a little over a year ago when we obtained approval for a door on the side, which you'll see shortly. And then we had to go through the process with the DOT to get revocable consent for this front yard area. So let's see. So this is in the Cobble Hill Historic District. This is the project right over here. It's a corner building on the corner of Kane Street and Cheever Place. These are the historic photos, and this is the present condition on the right. And you can see that there's just a huge sidewalk in front because there's used to be a candy shop and who knows what else over the years, but it is now a single-family residence. And so we actually renovated the interior of this building over the course of the past year, got approval to move this, to turn this window right here back into a door, which is what it once was, which you can see in the historic photo, to make that the entrance to the house. And then our application here is really to create, create a buffer of plantings in the front of and on the side of the building and sort of find a more elegant way to house the trash and recycling bins. So this is the existing condition. And this is our proposed, this was our, I think this is our initial proposal, and then you'll actually see that we, in the scheme we've done, we had to pull back on Kane Street a bit to make DOT happy with the sidewalk size. Again, this is the existing condition. You can see on the upper right a photograph of the storefront. And then on the, just below that to the right, you can see the neighbors' front areaways. There's, there's a line all the way down the remainder of Kane Street at that line, which is the line we wanted to go to, but DOT gave us a little bit less. Just side elevation. This was the, before we put in the new door at that window. This is examples of other corner sort of front areaways that are planted. The, both of these are within a block of the site. So you can see that this is our site right here, and these photographs are of these two corner buildings at the corner of Kane and Henry. And then this is the, this is the, the zone of the revocable consent, and this is, this is what DOT has approved for us. And this is our proposed design of that area. And so the, the principal thing that we're doing is we're mimicking the ironwork of the building that's adjacent to us at 130-30 Kane Street. We are having a stucco, a brownstone stucco curb running around, around, and it's sort of set back from the corner, and this is, this is that sort of required front yard. And that just turns the corner with the same radius as the, as the sidewalk itself or the curb out here. Turns the corner, there's our, our trash bin, another planter entry into the house, and then another planter here. And then this was the side yard. This is the previously approved. This is just a detail of the proposed ironwork and curb on, on Cheever Place. This is the existing on Kane Street and the proposed on Kane Street. So we're maintaining the gate to the, to the storefront doors, with those storefront doors have been fixed in place and are no longer being used by the occupants. Trash enclosure details. Curb and planting area details. Along the side. I think that is it, so I'm just going to go back to the plan. There. Finished. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Okay, no questions. I note that there's no one in this room to speak on this item, so I will turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Those joining us via Zoom who wish to offer remote testimony, please use the raise hand function. All right, seeing none, I will note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board Six Landmarks Committee recommends approval, and that will go before their full board on their full board meeting on the 10th.
Thank you. Commissioners, any final questions? Okay, let's move to close the hearing. Commissioner Goldblum, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Commissioner Chu, would you second that?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed. Commissioner Mayon, would you like to start this discussion?
Sure. This looks quite straightforward. It's in keeping with the treatment of all the neighbors. Achieves some good functional purpose, organizing the trash, trash bins. You know, the, the style and detailing is in keeping with the surrounding neighborhood and precedent. It's quite straightforward, and I can find this appropriate.
Thank you. Commissioner Chen?
Agree.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
I agree. I, I slight concern that the storefront that's now an apartment is now going to have planting in front of it and a fence in front of it, which historically it wouldn't, but given it's already now residential and so on, I think this is appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wilder?
I think it's appropriate.
Commissioner Ikumbey?
Appropriate.
Commissioner Chu?
Agreed.
And Commissioner Goldblum?
Agreed.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Mayon, can you make the motion?
So moved. I have to read it in. Thought I was going to get off easy. Regarding LPC 21-10447, 130 Kane Street, Cobble Hill Historic District, application is to construct an areaway and install curbing and ironwork. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Cobble Hill Gardens Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that there is ample precedent for fenced areaways at corner buildings throughout this historic district, that the proposed areaway consisting of planting beds surrounded by simple black painted ironwork on a low brownstone tinted stucco curb will be typical in terms of height, materials, and finish, and will be in keeping with existing areaways throughout the district, that the black painted trash enclosure will be simple in design, well-integrated within the areaway, and will not call undue attention to itself in the streetscape, and that the work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building or the Cobble Hill Historic District.
Thank you. Commissioner Chen, can you second that?
Second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Vice Chair Master?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum? Commissioner Ikumbey?
Aye.
Mann?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilder?
Aye.
With eight in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
Thank you. That's approved.
All right, we are running ahead of schedule. We are going to try and do the item nine that was scheduled for after lunch now. I believe the applicants are here and the staff is on its way down. So I'll go ahead and read that into the record, and then we'll
So I'll go ahead and read that into the record, um, and then we'll, uh, start as soon as we can. So we'll be doing public hearing item number nine, LPC 25-11397, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 634, lot 57. This is 96 Bank Street in the Greenwich Village Historic District. Uh, this is a Greek Revival-style row house built in 1839, and the application is to alter and re-clad the rear yard addition. If the applicant's here, you, you may go up to the front, um, and start your presentation. You can click on the screen to advance slides.
I'm Today, my name is Nancy Dale, and I am part of the architectural team uh, to convert the two-family home to a single-family residence, which we have superseded. While the overall plans remain the same, we are proposing to renovate the rear facade for three main reasons. One, our client purchased this home as they love the village and its history and want to make the aesthetic of the home more historically accurate, both on the interior and the exterior. Property has not had a major renovation in roughly 60 years, and when the current rear extension facade was actually installed and is in needing of repairs. Lot line windows are now non-compliant, and we are looking to rectify that. 96 Bank Street is part of the Greenwich Village Historic District and sits between Hudson Street and Bible Brick Row House. Within a donut block with all the rear and side yards having limited visibility from the surrounding streets on the building heights, not only is our rear yard not visible from any of the surrounding streets, it is also hidden from most of the rear yards, uh, within the donut, given we face our south neighbor's sidewall. Photo two shows 96 Bank Street's front facade. Photo three shows the view from Greenwich Street back to where our rear yard is located. There is no visible, visibility to the rear facade as it sits behind 769 Greenwich's front facade. Photos four, five, and six at the bottom are from our roof back to our neighbors within the block. Photo four is the view from the view to the buildings that are on Hudson Street. 575 and 579 rear and side yard windows would have limited visibility back to our facade. Photo five is the view down to our rear yard and our adjoining neighbors' yards. South, um, side lot property, right there. Photo four is the view to... Photo five is the east view showing that our neighbors... Sorry, I lost my train of thought, just one second. Photo five is the east view showing that our neighbors are set back from us and do not have views back to our facade. 94 Bank Street is currently also applying for a rear yard extension that will further limit our facade visi- visibility to the surrounding rear yard neighbors. For a closer look at our existing facade, one can see that there are no historical row house elements, and while interesting, it has suffered from neglect, noticeable repairs, and through wall AC units being installed, as shown in photo six. While there is an angled recessed brick pattern on the east side, it was not carried over to the west side, creating an inconsistent facade pattern, as seen in photo four. Sisting steel columns and lintels are shown, are showing the initial signs of corrosion, as shown in photos two and five. My apologies? While there is no structural concern at this time, it is our desire to ensure that this does not become an issue in the years that progress. To illustrate the existing conditions of the lot line windows, we are showing the elevations in photos. As you can see in photo seven, down in the far right bottom corner, this is the west side windows of the house are now behind the elevator extension at 769 Greenwich Street. This also provides a good angle of the visibility back to our rear facade from this neighbor's backyard. We thank them for permitting us to take this photo. The east side basement window faces the fence of 94 Bank Street. The parlor level window is DOB non-compliant due to fire separation distance inside. One, while one could argue that the second and third floor windows are still DOB compliant with the newly approved 94 Bank Street extension, the only one that will continue to be so is the third floor, which we are proposing to keep. Under the currently approved LPC filing, the rear facade design was a replacing kind window, a more traditional divided pane window style. It had called for repainting the exposed steel and leading so that the patching and repairing would not result in a pleasant aesthetic, and recognize that while painting the steel would help preserve it, it's not a good long-term solution. Our desire to protect the structural elements, along with our desire to have a more historically accurate facade, our proposal is to infill the rear facade, have the windows follow a more traditional pattern reminiscent of the history, and fully brick veneer the facade for harmonious, um, surface. Proposed to do the same infill and thin brick veneer cladding on the lot line facades. While the existing non-conforming windows were proposed to remain on the original filing for NYC DOB purposes, all except for the third floor east side lot line window. This will still be NYC lot line window compliant, even with a proposed 94 Bank Street yard extension. Our proposed side lot line facade in section four. Renovation, we are proposing to infill the facade areas needed for both new window configuration and to enclose exposed steel and lintels. This will happen with lightweight exterior partitions to load on the existing facade structure. The exterior partitions will align with the face of the existing bricks, wall system that will remain, then to create a continuous facade, opposed to add a vapor barrier with thin brick cladding system over top. The ASTM exterior cladding requirements, the thin clay brick system consists of a brick that is approximately half an inch thick, mounted to a metal grid backing system, for an even brick pattern installation. This is applied onto the exterior partition. Are proposing to use a brick color that matches the existing front facade. The specified for the rear facade match the LPC-approved front facade windows. The existing metal stills were replaced with a similar sandstone still that can be found on the front facade. As shown in these conceptual drawings, the proposed rear yard renovation stems from the new owner's desire to create a more historically accurate West Village home. They're protecting the three-pocket window pattern on the two upper floors with the parlor level windows accommodating our kitchen cabinetry clearances and a full glazing system out to the rear yard. It has the added fundamental benefit of protecting the underlying rear facade steel structure and removing non-compliant lot line windows. Finding that this facade respects the history of this village block gives the facade a more harmonious aesthetic while still working with the interiors.
Thank you. Um, any questions? Um, Commissioner Goldblum, Commissioner Chu, and then Commissioner Ginsburg.
Oh, forgive me if I missed it, 'cause I know you did go into it, but explain to me exactly why you need to do thin brick?
It's more because of how much work it would be to blend the existing brick with the new partitions, and our structural engineer recommended we don't infill with, say, CMU and a brick system, just given the weight of it.
Okay, um, blending's blending. You're still gonna have to blend your, your thin brick. I mean, color-wise and pattern-wise, no?
Well, the thin brick will be applied across the whole facade.
Okay, so the alternate to, to, uh, thin brick would be to strip off the old bricks. That.
I guess, but I'm, would have to confer with how much that's gonna cost and run it through, through the client. That's not something we've considered.
And would, um, there, I would imagine that in that block there are examples of either painted or coated brick back facades aplenty?
But 94 Bank Street right now is going back to red brick, and our neighbor on 769 is red brick.
Okay, thanks.
Related to that question, what is the existing makeup of the wall? Could you explain, your, 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 your section looks like it's a, it's light gauge framing holding up.
Right, so right now it is a brick system with just the steel columns on the sides. Here, I'll go back to the photo of the existing frame. So, the bands are a brick wall system. Um, and then we have steel columns basically supporting the full facade, um, on the left and right side, um, with steel beams and lintels across each.
So basically, the existing facade's brick is, is...
Exactly.
Okay. The amount of brick that's remaining here after you, as you're removing, those are AC units, penetrations, those would get filled, and then, uh, essentially half of this material would be infilled in the new material to create the new facade.
Correct. Didn't run the
Right.
calculations with how much percentage-wise. Uh, let me go. Alert. Does that show in color on your screen? It's hard to
Yeah, I can see the light gray.
So the, the left side is actually the area
All the infill. Like, yeah, to get consistency, you really want the same brick. Okay.
I think, you know, one of the reasons we chose to clad rather than just infill, though, across the window goes from column to column of steel. That unto itself then is still something that would be if we just infill.
Yeah, you would have horizontal joints, correct. Okay, understood.
So, I have a few questions. Do you have any documentation of what was here before the current facade?
In before the existing
In other words, you're saying I'm going back to a historic facade, but...
Just basically what our neighbors have at 94 and 92 Bank Street, 'cause they are relatively still intact.
Second, uh, do you know when this rear facade was done? Or it was done before designation?
Uh, it's not part of the LPC.
And then the, uh, third question, you said something that, that the steel lintels are fine now, but they've become a maintenance issue. In my
It's showing some wear and tear, obviously, over 60 years, so... Um, and just the way that it's structured, like you have brick, and then there's really no flashing, so it's just the steel right there, right now, and so any water penetrating, it's
But if they were repaired and painted and maintained, they could continue to be structurally sound. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, is there anybody here who would like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, let me turn it over to Stephen Thompson for remote, uh, testimony.
Anyone joining us, I assume, who wishes to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function. Our first speaker will be Kaylee Johnson. I'll be promoting you to panelists, after which we ask you to unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Hello Commissioners, Kaylee Johnson with the Historic District's Council. HGC does not oppose the alteration and re-cladding of this rear yard addition, given its limited visibility. However, we do think that the rear facade should be completely stripped to the studs and a full brick veneer be added. Additionally, the windows on the parlor floor appear to be different in proportion from the other floors, but we note that they will not be visible from the public thoroughfare. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other participants joining us online right now, I'll note for the record that, uh, Manhattan Community Board Two recommends mixed approval, approving overall of the proposal, but recommending denial of the non-historic short parlor floor windows and asking that they be of historic length.
Thank you. Um, would the applicant like to respond to the comments?
For us, um, given, you know, not only only six inches shorter, um, and it's so that our kitchen cabinets do not fall below the window, um, it's are not visible. Other rear facades, um, in our home actually upper window lines are the same size. Parlor level is actually a little higher, and then obviously our basement level has the short windows. Ask, I thought you'd reconsider.
Thank you. Um, are there any final questions, Commissioners? Okay, let's, uh, close the hearing. Commissioner Akumbe, will you make a motion to close the hearing? Um, Commissioner Chu, can you second that?
Second.
Um, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed. Corey, do you wanna say a few words?
Sure, um, so I think this application is, uh, similar to other things you see uh, many times where an owner wants to, you know, renovate, redesign perhaps, um, a rear facade that's been previously altered. And in this case, you know, the entire rear of the building of this, uh, historic row house was extended outward and given, you know, an addition and a certain design. Uh, I think at an unknown date, uh, you know, we don't have photographs of rear facades, you know, things that aren't visible from a public thoroughfare in our designation photos, and it's not discussed in the designation report, uh, which I think, as you all know, in this case was written in the, in the late 60s and it just doesn't go into a lot of detail in many cases, even for front facades. Uh, so there, there isn't a whole lot of background on it, other than I think that the staff has generally considered other alterations at the back of buildings like this to, to not be significant features, uh, of the building or the district. And, and back to the current proposal, um, as you often see, the applicant seeks to, uh, sort of historicize, uh, a, a new approach and bring back traditional red brick, uh, appearance, uh, the, the look of punched openings in a typical pattern and, and most cases, and, and things of that nature. Uh, what does make this, uh, admittedly different is this is really in, kind of, an over-cladding of the existing wall systems, filling in, uh, the areas between spandrels and then adding this new thin brick, uh, over top of everything to accomplish it. So that's what you all are, uh, I think, considering today, is that this is, um, not just a rear addition or a small bulkhead, it is the entire rear facade, uh, but the applicant stated reasons why they've, uh, chosen this particular, uh, materiality and approach. I will note that the commission, um, has approved, uh, something, uh, other than full brick in other occasions. Uh, this is most typical for things like bulkheads or sometimes smaller rear additions, but also actually for an entirely new, uh, contemporary design building. Uh, 147 St. Felix is an example in the Brooklyn Academy of Music Historic District. And in that case, it was somewhat similar to what's being proposed, but those bricks were, I believe, a little bit thicker. They were on a, a metal racking system that ensures consistency of joint placement and size, uh, and also the ability to turn corners. Uh, and that building has been constructed and staff's reviewed and signed off on the work, and, and it actually does look, uh, pretty convincing and good. So I'm not familiar with this particular, uh, brick system, which is a little bit thinner, but it seems to have some similarities to that.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Chu, would you like to start this discussion?
Yeah, sure. So, very interesting case in a very unique site, uh, very tight site, and, um, unfortunate, uh, additions that causes, caused repercussions to this rear, uh, facade in addition. Um, looking at the proposed facade, um, apart from the fact that I quite like the original facade, the, the modernist, um, had integrity to its details, and that's something I wanna just point out, too. Is the proposed, uh, facade rear elevation, I don't have an issue with. I think that the applicant's desire to have, I think it was mentioned, a more traditional, uh, uh, elevation that was in keeping with the neighborhood and its age of the house. The, this proposed facade may be more similar to that. I, I don't know if the, the study of the, of the window sizes and widths are in fact in keeping with that. Um, we could probably look at the houses next door as a precedent. They are different slightly. I think I can approve that. My issue overall, and, and, and from the beginning, has been the, the material selection. What's being proposed to me is enough of a re-renovation of the facade that almost essentially is a rebuild. All the windows are replaced. Half the facade is being All the windows are replaced, half the facade is being revised. The desire to keep what's left of existing brick and re-clad it with a soap brick, which will run over consistent differences in substrate is always an issue in any overclad. I also think that because of the number of windows and punches, every return of every window starts to become a strange condition with these corners, soap bricks. I can approve this, but I do feel strongly that it needs to be full brick veneer as a facade system. That's that. That's the one piece that I object to strongly in this proposal. It's too much of the facade. It's the entire facade. It's not an addition to a historic existing facade. It's a new facade.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ikumbe?
Yes, I've been following through, going through the details. That that if this is going to be a brick facade.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wilder?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I think I have similar thoughts. I initially thought that the entire facade was being removed, the rear wall was being removed. It seems a simpler way to do it, but I don't necessarily, I wouldn't necessarily oppose how they do it, but I that's just how I would have thought it was being done. I'm fine with fine with the changes. I think it is similar to the building next door, but not necessarily the same. I'm okay.
I'm sorry, did you say you're okay with it as proposed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg?
I I'm torn, but I lean towards saying that the approved facade is significantly better. It keeps that, we don't know how old it is, but it's probably at least sixty years old, this facade. And if there was some basis for restoration besides, well, it looks more historic. But given that, given that you're then doing this thin brick overcladding, which the is sort of was referenced, is very hard to do well. Because any irregularities in the substrate of the existing brick will get picked up. And because it's thin, it will look strange. It also tends to be too regular and and doesn't have the feel of a historic wall. So I would vote, you know, the, I'm not wed to the color of the existing brick if one wanted to paint it or replace it, but I'd vote against this proposal and for the original proposal.
Commissioner Chen? Very interesting discussion, and I think that overall, I think, you know, I think the key is really about do it do it right the first time. Or down the road, you had to play catch-up, which is what Commissioner Chu's point is, which is that it will be difficult to maintain and with the flashing detail and the turning of the corners and the window details. So it is, I I I support the concept of restoring, you know, coming back to the look and feel of your adjoining neighbors. But the the means of achieving it, I think that's where is
Okay, Commissioner Mayn?
Yeah, this is certainly a complicated one. You know, dealing with issues of sort of integrity and authenticity, originality. You know, and I do go back, though, to the fact, as I understand it, that this is not visible from any thoroughfare, public thoroughfare whatsoever, nor is this rear facade understood to be original to the building. You know, or perhaps even a contributing element to the historic district. So I tend to lean towards approval on this one. I I understand and concur that the the detailing issues, waterproofing, you know, all the various conditions is likely going to be very challenging with the proposed system. But in my view, you know, this, our our position here, our role here, you know, that is something that the applicant can can deal with. That's sort of their burden to bear. But given the sort of lack of originality or visibility, I I tend to lean towards approval.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
Thanks. I agree a hundred percent with what Stephen had said, both in terms of his admiration for the existing and the critique of the proposed. And and the way I hear it, it kind of falls into the category of one of those things that the commission has over time looked at that is kind of a criterion apart from visibility or, you know, visual effect. And that that is appropriateness of using a particular material in a landmark district irrespective of its historicity or visibility, you know, we, the idea is that historic districts are supposed to be populated by well-maintained buildings that are built in a quality manner. And that's why so far, one doesn't see a lot of vinyl vinyl siding. Why we try to use cement board siding in a in a very, you know, judicious way and thoughtfully. You know, ethos has always been something that we also try to be thoughtful about. So I think that absent a, I mean, the the examples, the St. Felix project, I don't recall. And I don't know if I if I knew that it was a thin brick, but the only thing brick jobs that I can recall us approving were like lot line situations where there was just no room to do anything, or there was some other dimensional constraint preventing the use of normal brick. So I think that from that perspective, I think that Stevens and others' critique of the thin brick is is very valid. And I would I would ask for it to be done with a standard brick construction.
Okay, thank you. It looks like we don't have enough to support the thin brick cladding. But I feel that if we do a full brick, would the Commissioners feel comfortable with that replacement? Maybe we can make that motion. Would that be okay, Commissioner Chu?
Yeah, as long as that's okay with the applicant.
The applicant will have the choice to study that and use that approval if they choose to or come back if they want to try something different. Right.
In the case of LPC twenty-five, one one three nine seven ninety-six Bank Street Greenwich Village Historic District or Greek Revival Style Row House built in eighteen thirty-nine, the application is to alter and re-clad the rear yard addition. I note that the building's scale, style, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architecture and historic character of the Greenwich Village Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the existing modern rear addition is not historic and the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the proposed work will not be visible from any public thoroughfare, and that the design proportions and materiality of the renovated rear facade, including full brick cladding and punched windows with multi-light wood windows and door assemblies, will be compatible with other similar rear facades and features of other rowhouses and apartment buildings on the block, and that the work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the Greenwich Village Historic District.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum, can you second that? Thanks. Mark, can you call the vote?
Your master?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Chu? Ginsburg?
Nay.
Goldblum? Commissioner Bunby? Commissioner Mayn?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilder?
We're saying
The full brick.
Full brick.
Yeah.
Mr. Wilder?
Aye.
Seven in favor and one opposed, the motion passes.
Okay, that's approved. Thank you. Okay, that that concludes our morning session and we're gonna break for lunch. It is twelve thirty-three right now. Let's return at one oh five to resume the afternoon session. We're gonna ask all members of the public on Zoom to voluntarily exit at this time so that you don't experience technical difficulties returning to the afternoon session, which can arise if we have to remove you from the meeting.